They want to talk about and go forth that way.
I think what we're looking at is fifteen minutes at the end of our meeting. In which, if everybody does the math with me, everybody talks for three minutes. You have five people talking and then the board either elected or not elected. And if someone is asking a question, it's pretty easy to politely interrupt them and say, "That's an issue that maybe should be brought in." A principal, maybe should be brought in, superintendent. I trust the public and I encourage the public to continue to be here and be engaged.
Engagement, I mean, I guess, I don't, I would assume everybody's got the orientation. The orientation gives you a sense of what the responsibilities of the board is. And it's not that we're not trying to be bringing the public on board. It's really, it's a little different than the selectmen. We have a government that we have to run here. We have financial stuff that we have to deal with all the time. We have things that we need to be dealing with and things that we need to let Russ deal with and Mr. Money and deal with. This is very important. And I guess, I guess the second public forum, we need to know, or I need to know, is Chair. How are we going to, I guess, how are we going to contain that?
Well, as Chair, you're the one, as soon as the meeting starts, you are the one in control.
No, I know.
You are the one that sets, you can recognize me or you don't have to recognize me.
But the thing is that there's not going to be back and forth because that we're looking for input of it down. I guess is what you're saying. But we have, this is the thing that is, we have it in place. Russ set up perfectly. We have things in place. Russ does the roundtable. Sean does his roundtable. We have, we have elements of making that work.
I understand.
So if you want to open up the door, I mean, these rules and regulations are not done by Sonny School, not done by Newport School. This is the New Hampshire School Board Association putting these rules together and this is how you govern your meetings. So I'm not.
This is actually our policy. This is our School Board Association policy.
It is.
So it's a whole template? We didn't make any modifications?
So then the number two line item might not have even been a problem we had here in Sonny then, it may have been some other problem.
No, it's likely.
So my feeling is, Sean, I think like a perfect example of the first public forum, just because people have the time to speak doesn't mean we need to act on it. You certainly demonstrated that the first time. So I don't see if we give the second public forum that is getting that out of hand. It's not that you don't have to answer the questions, I guess, if it's something you feel like should be redirected to Russ.
And we shouldn't be because that's really not our duty to do that.
I meant to say, per the policy, you need to go see Russ or Jody or whatever.
If there's, you know, if you'd like to find out something with computers, Russ, Sean, I mean, that's the avenue that we need to, that's the avenue that we need to make sure that we're steer very fresh. Because I'm not even the one to tell them about computers. I don't, I know.
No, you're the facilitator of the meeting.
Well, and I think that's a great opportunity, though. Somebody says, "I'd like to hear something about computers." You say, "Oh, we'll go see," so and so. So that's the end of it.
No, so I just want to make sure that we understand that we're all on board for that. If everybody's on board for that, then that's fine.
And the other thing, six months from now, if it doesn't work.
Do you want to, do you want to change anything or is there nothing you want to change? Do you want to bring something back or not?
Well, I'll make the motion unless Brian Moon makes the motion.
No, I'm comfortable with opening up to topics on the second question, but I think you're going to be challenged to try to keep them focused and corralled. I am concerned about that. So, you know, if it's, I don't know if we said, "All right, we'll do this for the next three meetings. The fourth meeting, we put this back on the agenda to say, 'All right, let's see how it's worked. Let's reevaluate and make a decision and move forward.'"
Well, at any time, we can bring the policy back to change it. It's not like it's, I mean, that's where policies, that's why you have the first meeting, that's why you have the second meeting, so you can change it whenever you want. So I guess that's what the, because that's what the pleasure of the board is.
Sorry. I just have a point of clarification. If we're making a substantive modification to this, do we need to have a first reading?
Substitute probably not. What I would request, if you are going to make this change as you're discussing, that you allow me to go in and put the verbiage in there you're talking about that. First, Israel's supposed to be a gentleman's only. Second would be for other topics with the understanding.
That it's not personal.
And maybe even.
Right, even though it's clarified in three, just reclarifying again as the second public input, these are the stipulations under the second.
Most of the stuff always gets reviewed by her aide, so it'd be nice to make sure she has the right words.
So it sounds like we do need to have the.
Or I could do this and save you the Thursday meeting. I could do it, send it to you electronically, but we have a, I mean, actually, these principals have any side of that with comments. Once we make the plan, I'll send out the attorney and then we can bring it back here for October. And you have the right, actually, if you choose to waive your first and second meeting and put a right to the policy based upon policy.
And then I would also recommend that we maybe just draft something up on a piece of paper to post at the meetings as a reminder to people of what they can't discuss.
So what we'll do is we'll get tonight is we put a copy on the back next to the agendas and we'll just continue to do that.
Perfect. I just like to say, just a quick reminder before somebody speaks to say, "Can I, or can I not?"
Okay, so everybody's comfortable with that. So what we're going to do is table that one, but we do need to continue on with the video/audio surveillance on school property. E E A A, yes. And which review?
Review, and this has to go with RSA 1989, 189, 168, four, which last year, remember, we talked about with any audio, video, excuse me, any video within classrooms needed to come to the board, maybe get permission from the board of the public here, and then maybe get parents through permission and teacher permission. That has been repealed. Now, the only time we need to get that permission is when it is going to be used for judicial evaluation. So you just made the change in the policy.
And my question on that, is that per union negotiation or?
No, that was through RSA. So I thought it would be a good idea based upon doing what the gate one puts camera to the classroom and a field and a teaching units for feeling that it was going to be used for evaluation or this is not for.
Okay.
And our last one was the background investigation from the records check, G B C D.
And again, this reflects change in legislation RSA 189, 113A. We should say it's superintendent and/or designate. Now, as only superintendent is allowed to see criminal background checks. And once those background checks are made, are looked at, I make a determination, must destroy those background checks unless background checks become much more thorough. Division of taking out and designate the district.
Do we need a motion?
If you're issuing policies.
So recap is just the B E D H.
Yeah, please.
Questioning policies?
Yes.
So last meeting, we discussed tuition students coming to the district.
Yes.
Can we review the policy for how their participation is evaluated in subsequent years?
Sure. So it does say in the current policy we have that they're reviewed every year by the building crews.
And we do vote on it.
We're probably lackadaisical in that. We don't always bring that up to the board.
Because if yours passed.
I'm not sure we, I have no recollection.
You're probably, I think probably a few years past that I think we've been lackadaisical. I know the principals review them and they will tell me, "Yes, these people, okay, come back." And so I'll take that responsibility back by having gone through it before. So are you looking for more in depth than that one?
I guess just a review of the process. If we end up with a student that is not working out, what's the, what's our obligation, yeah, what's our obligation to that student for the second or third or fourth year?
So why don't we do this, why don't we bring the policy forward for review and I can let the administration speak to the process they have in place? Is that going to be specific in the policy that would be based upon how they review each student? We can get principals, we can get support, we can allow this. Does that work for you, Brian?
Yeah, I think it's good to go through, look through the process. The policy, what the policy does have, you see, where is it? Really, we are really like private school in that sense. So we don't have an obligation on year two, three, or four. Frankly, we don't have an obligation on quarter three.
We don't have, basically, we don't have an area agreement with anybody. So if there are some problems, then we do not have to take them with all the air. They're not obligated to stay here. We don't have to take them. It's just, when you have an area agreement, then you are bound.
And we do not have any.
We've never had one. I think we still, we still do stay.
But I think it's worthwhile looking at the process because I have seen over the last few years, we have more.
Yeah, it seems our tuition and population continues to grow.
So I think it's very worthwhile looking at the process.
And I think that's probably a concern for the people that live in town and send their kids here is, all right, who are we bringing in? Has it affected the environment at school and just the size of student population?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. One action items. Approval of both nature's classroom extended field trip.
So you have the packet, you have the information in the packet. This is a really, field trip that goes on this experience, you're a first drop, it's very experience. It's not awful, the principal, when you see that generally.
We've been doing this for twenty seven, long time. Twenty eight?
All motions to approve the nature's classroom extended field trip.
Okay, motion made by April. And you have a second?
Not second.
Second by Paul and discussion on the motion.
Just, is the fee paid by the student comfortable to last year's or any changes in that?
Majority of it's paid by the tag sale or the yard sale that they have every year.
Good.
Sean?
Yeah, the school does provide some funding for it. Typically, students who volunteer at the tag sale, I think have almost a whole trip paid for, but we run into some circumstances where we still have financial issues at times.
Have all the chaperones been found?
No, we're one away.
Brian.
Is that a volunteer?
No.
When I went, Brian, the shower was empty, half a lot of water.
Showers?
Actually, aren't the board members supposed to go there?
I'll go next year.
Unfortunately, I think they're looking for a male chaperone.
We are looking for a male chaperone.
I thought I had heard that.
Gymn athlete?
He's already, he's already going. Four man.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion. Okay, second. Prove the budget advisory meeting process for the school. Okay, last, at the last meeting, we ended up talking about, actually, Donna sent you the package. So we just have to really, everybody supposedly reviewed it.
The top, the top has approved. We'll go with the process.
And we didn't want to vote on it until we knew the selectmen voted on it, so that that's only seven years.
And there were no changes? Everything is good?
Unless there's any changes at the last board meeting and if everybody was happy with it, I, well, why don't we put it into a motion form and we can discuss it again.
A motion to approve the advisory budget committee process for the school board.
Okay, motion by April. Second, second by Brian. And does anybody have any other questions on this?
Other than where are they going to put all these people on the meeting?
The select board discussed who might be the person on the school board?
We have, it is. Sorry, my name. She's right there.
And that asks the.
Thank you, sir.
Then the next question is, do the volunteers, sorry.
Want to jump ahead?
Yeah, we may. Do you have, have you other questions? You're none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion. Pointing school board members to serve on the town VAC. I'd like to get, I'd like to do that. It's the first time out of the chute with a new, with a new VAC. With what they're doing and what's been approved as far as the policy, I think it'd be nice to. Anybody have any questions on that?
Did anybody else want it? So I'm a budget person, I like budgets, but I'm certainly, if it's easier for you, that works for me.
I, it's up to you. I mean, you've got plenty, you're on those other two committees.
I know exactly.
Okay, I mean, if you want to give up one of those, I suppose, but unless you have all kinds of time on your hands, then you have.
I don't, and I think this is probably one of the meetings that's harder to attend when you're scheduling with all those people.
So just so you're aware, Sean, your first commitment is October 28th and it starts at the AM.
Thank you, Sean.
I make a motion that Sean Carl serves as the school board representative and the budget advisor.
Motion made by Brian.
My second.
Second by Heather. And discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion. Okay. Prove the proposed transfer of up to $200,000 for the special aid capital reserve fund to the 2016, 2017 operating budget. And unless we do like to do that, we're.
I will do that. And I'll just know that I'm going to be very sensitive, this is very sensitive, and so I am going to debate. If there are additional questions, I would ask that we go to. Based upon some unanticipated out-of-district placements in the district, we are requesting to take up to $200,000 out of the Special Education Capital Reserve Fund, which currently holds $316,000, for unanticipated expenses, again, for out-of-district tuitions for students.
And out-of-district is, I mean, we can't supply these services or it's a little bit more than we can.
It's beyond the scope of services that we provide.
Then ask for out-of-district. And that's what that account's set up for. We have it in the, as an article every year, cases happen, we've used it a number of different times, I don't know the exact years, but I know that it seems like never gets full. For some reason, it just goes in that sub.
So I have a question, I think it's vague enough for public. So just to clarify, the $200,000 that we're pulling out of the reserve, these unanticipated out-of-district district tuitions, are they for special education students?
Yes, they have.
So it's what it's, it's really not a, you're not putting it in the general fund, you're using the reserve to cover the special education expenses.
We have some money in that line, but again, based upon these unanticipated costs, I think that line is going to go over and not tax the rest of the budget. And again, by this account's setup, we would take this money up to $200,000, doesn't mean we're going to take the $200,000 up to $200,000 to cover whatever those discrepancies might be.
And what is the amount in the reserve currently?
$316,000.
$316,000. So do you feel like next year, you may need to budget more for?
Potentially, we've had some conversations about that moving forward, but we have to really wait to see exactly what we're picking out, but all that looks like at the end of the year.
How many, how many, how much should we put in historically?
Twenty-five hundred.
So it's a many-year rebuilding process?
Yeah, I mean, there are, like, after, you brought up a good point, after, I mean, if we take the money out, which may be approved, then we will look at probably putting $100,000 in there to start. And then, then the next year, you might do 25 or 25. You know what I mean? It depends upon what tariff, what, well, basically, it's just, it's a practice, you try to figure out what makes the most sense.
And just to clarify, if we were to vote down the $200,000, then you would be obligated and required to take money away from the general education students to cover these expenses.
Sure.
If you don't spend the $200,000 throughout the year, what happens to the remainder?
So we would take up two, so my words.
The only withdrawal you need as opposed to take $200,000 and end up with $50,000 extra?
Okay.
Got it.
What's that? Anybody else have any other questions?
Just a simple one, this is what we have to do?
Yes.
We've looked at all the other solutions to our educational requirements.
Yes.
And the money that we're investing right now in getting our special education people trained more, is that the same direction that will prevent this from happening in the future? And is that not vague enough?
Is that, that's vague enough, but not, no, not necessarily, because you never know what potentially could become.
Excellent. I would like to, at this point, make a motion to discuss this further in non-public session. So the new board members and also the board members who have extenuating questions about this particular case can better understand the situation.
We can, and actually, if everybody feels comfortable, if you vote now, we can actually vote. We can vote on coming out, if everybody's comfortable with that. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, we'll table that for right now, we'll get there and then we'll be, we'll move right on to the meeting. It's approved, proposed tuition payment schedule for the state of school district. Billy Ross.
The Croydon superintendent has asked us if we would allow the school district to pay us in quarterly payments. Typically, we ask for the money upfront. And due to their cash flow restraints, he's asked to make quarterly payments. We've done this before to Newport. They typically make quarterly payments, but now Newport is not part of their equation, so pretty much it's being transferred to the new SAU. So he's looking for, who will, quarterly payments. They owe us seven students, $89,400. So that would be four payments of $22,350. And we would set them up as automatic payments.
And do we have any concerns with our cash flow if we agree to the quarterly payments? Is that, we're still okay?
This is what's, that's, that number is, as it stands right now, I don't need to change it.
Also, when they're paying, that's okay.
You're comfortable with getting that?
This is our first time with Croydon. Newport, we had no issues, you approved that in the past, and they paid, actually, they paid sooner than it stated.
Again, because of the Newport, it's split.
Yep.
I just, can you say the numbers again for me?
Yep, they owe us $89,400. So it'd be $22,350 each quarter. If it stays at seven students.
Anybody make a motion?
All motion. A motion to approve the proposed tuition payment schedule for the Croydon district.
Motion made by April.
My second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the outfitting, the outing club, sorry, not the outfitting club, outing club.
Thank you. As you read through this, if you could look, each year, Mr. Coverdale and Yattin Club does four overnight camping trips. What we ask each year is that we can just get approval on the four, and then from there, he comes to me for direct approval. And the reason for that is that unlike other trips, well, overnight trips, we need the approval from the school board, but unlike other trips, these trips have a way of moving a lot. You know, for instance, we could all of a sudden be November 2nd, and then the weather's terrible, and, you know, what's it doing November 9th? So we do a lot of movement with those trips. We'll have them pass, like I say, to get a blanket. He can do the four so long as he's approving it through the building to do that. So that's what we're asking for this year.
Someone need to make a motion?
I have a quick question. How long has Mr. Coverdale been doing this?
Eleven or twelve years?
I'll make a motion that's approved, that's proposed. Motion made by Paul.
Second.
Second made. Any questions?
Just a couple. He says he holds the current CPR certification on the all-female trips. I assume we have another CPR certified person or?
We always have one. We don't always have one.
What's that? And substitute on a Friday, is that just one or multiple?
It depends. So sometimes a chaperone will be somebody who's not a school employee, but the other times, boy, is a school employee.
Okay, and you sure there's room in the budget for that?
Yes.
Who approves the dates they're going to pick to go on? Just the white men's, any time of the year could be.
I do have a lot of, you know, I think Mr. Coverdale has shown a lot of responsibility over the years, and when he has any hesitancy.
Yep.
He will, he will tend to err on the side of caution on that. But he does work the dates to remain, and I look at all kinds of things. For instance, whether we're testing, whether we have, you know, what's, you know, we might have four teachers or five teachers out of the building that day, and then I can approve to have two substitutes, not so much for financial, just we don't have the coverage to do that.
I was thinking more risks outside the building than, yes, I'm thinking whether, and that's why the dates move. I would say each year, we probably move at least one of the dates based on other concerns.
Okay.
Yeah, you had, was it last year that it was going to snow, the day they were going to go, and you were, yeah. So that's kind of, part of the reason why he brings it to us in this forum and he has in the past is to just for that reason, so that he can discuss it before he actually lets us know what day it is because there are, it's a moving target.
Well, the big thing is if we move it, it might be moved to the next week.
Right.
But if we didn't have this kind of approval, I have to wait for the next school board meeting.
Because it's supposed to be done prior to the firm's.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, informational items.
Just quick information that the postsite school study group, or some central elementary school, is scheduled September 12th. And Paul and.
Helen.
Helen.
No.
Paul and Heather will be joining us on that. George, myself, and Matt. And Dan missing from Arlington will be joining us as well. Just letting them know that's scheduled, to keep you updated on that.
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning, first committee in the set is September 28th. We'll be here at Sonny Middle High School. And the administration, and myself, have been contacting folks to invite them to be part of that specific committee. Once that committee is formed, we'll get more information on as far as focus groups, the community, the parents, the teachers, all those, we'll take place for that. So this is this organizational committee.
And what's that, what time?
I'm going to have to remind myself, six o'clock.
And have we, I know you had gotten the quest from people in the public. Have you decided who's on the committee you found the balance of?
So I have started some invitations myself. The administration has given those names, and I said, "They can invite those people that they feel like are going to represent their schools." They're going to invite specific teachers who have shown interest. And I believe, Sean, are we looking at a student, the student that this one? Yes, probably inviting the student, got to be proud of that, steering committee.
And people, when they're saying they want to be on the committee, are giving sort of a background or a why or what they bring to the table?
Folks have given me that information, I've passed that along, and that would be part of the process of the administration. And again, if you're not chosen to be on the strategic planning, planning organization committee, there are still focus groups that everyone will have the opportunity to be part of.
Mercy, engine.
Just real quick, we had a drill on the 27th here at Sonny Middle High School, active shooter with a Sunday PD and homeland security. Had to drill, went well. We had three or four teachers here, we had six, eight, 10 students here. Definitely from, an interesting drill to watch, even though you know it's a drill, it still results in a lot of response, emotional and psychological. There are some things that I think that we picked up that we can do better, if we've taken some hints from watching that go on, and that's what a drill's for, look at things that you do and that you don't do, and improve upon them. It's a step in to continue to look at how we keep our students and our staff, not you please. Overall success, I don't know if Sean or me are going to want to add anything, they were also here.
Is this something you plan on doing annually or?
I would say probably not annually, and obviously, the next year would probably happen at the elementary school. But it wasn't something that would be annually. I think it's now, like I said, an opportunity to really look at our procedures, and we saw some things that we could have. I think it's now, like I said, an opportunity to really look at us, procedures, and we saw some things that we could improve upon. And the police will take that and they'll go and do their things. Overall, I think a very successful drill.
And was your feedback from the students that they were comfortable with the process and...
You know, we had a very small number of students there, and I'm very glad of that. I think that it certainly has the potential to be...
Motion.
Yeah, nerve wracking. So, you know, I think with the number being small, it was good, but I certainly wouldn't want to do that drill with 300 students. More 200 or one.
Quick question?
Yep.
Student representation for the board, are we going to...
So you will, Sean has given, well, Sean has posted three names to me. They're going to be sending me a letter of intent and sort of a resume. Once I get that, I'll contact the board chair to say he and another member want to meet with me or interview. Hopefully, we can get that in place by October.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, manifest.
A motion to approve AP manifest 2017 dash zero two, zero three, zero four, and zero five, as well as payroll manifest 2017 dash zero three, zero four, zero five, and zero five point one.
Motion made by April. Second by Paul. Second by Paul. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. It's a public forum. Anybody like to bring up any unit?
John Brandalini, Westwood Road, resident and voter. First off, I want to thank April and Paul very much for offering up that compromise on allowing the public to speak. I think it's a good solution. I think it's a great idea. I think Brian had mentioned it, maybe we can try it for three or four months, and if it doesn't work, go back. And all I would ask is if you do that, just make it very clear on the agenda that the first public forum is agenda items only. Because I got tripped up on this two months ago. I wasn't aware that you couldn't speak on other items. And then make the second public forum say open items and agenda items. Just make it very clear. So if somebody new is coming in, they kind of know what the rules are. So I want to thank you very much for harping that up. Number two, if you can't talk on agenda items as you, as you guys are going over them, such as the action items, I guess I would ask that when you publish the agenda, you put a little more detail behind that. I know that you don't want to put pages and pages, but a little more detail so the public has a chance to know what it's about and can offer up constructive observations in the public forum section upfront. Because for me to make a public comment now, after you've already approved something, is kind of a waste of everybody's time. So I guess I would ask that so we're a little more informed, so we can give input at the first public forum session. Third item on Croydon. Now, here's a comment I will make. I didn't, wasn't aware of it. You're going to allow Crow, Croydon to make quarterly payments without interest. As a taxpayer, I understand interest rates are very low, but I think we should just have a policy that they should have to pay a nominal interest if they're not paying it all upfront from a cash flow point of view and from a time, a future value of money. And the last comment is, the agenda says it's a Sunapee School District meeting. The minutes say it's a Sunapee School Board meeting. Which is it? I just don't know.
Basically, it's a school board meeting.
It's a school board meeting. Okay. Then from that point of view, from an optics point of view, I would think if you're not on the school board, you should sit somewhere else. There's just been some whispering going on up there that we, the public, can't hear from people that aren't on the school board. So I think if it's a school board meeting, the school board should sit together. And if you're not on the school board, you sit on the side. So that way, if Russ or somebody else has comments to make to the school board, we can hear them. There was at least two or three times when I, there was some whispering going on that we didn't hear. So that's just an optics, an optics comment.
Just letting you know. That's mine. That's, Russ is superintendent and he has the right to talk to me whenever he needs to.
The public has to be...
It's supposed to be audible in state law.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into discussion about this. Please, thank you. John?
John Augustine, Stagecoach Road. The, last question. So the September 28th strategic planning committee meeting, is that a meeting open to the public?
It is not.
Thank you. Separate question. So the advisory budget committee in its new form, this role of having someone from the selectman on the school board, ABC, and someone from the school board on, is new. So I guess my question is, as a school board, what is your expectation of your representatives to the town's role in that? For example, will Chairman Carroll just be commenting on things directly related to the school? Or will he comment on things that may have no relationship to the school when he participates in that all-day meeting on October 28th?
I thought it was my impression from how the town drafted the document that it would be an equal participation along with the other members. Right? So isn't that the intent of the meeting when you initially set it up was whoever's on the committee has, everybody has the same say?
I honestly don't know.
We adopted the board's policy.
This was something that was drafted by others, not the board. And, you know, brought forward supposedly as a result of the voters' wishes 20-plus years ago. So that's why I asked the question. So it sounds like April's interpretation is that your member will participate fully and comment on things related to school, unrelated to school. But is that, is that the consensus of the board?
We haven't really discussed it yet, but I guess as soon as, my gut feeling is as soon as Donna sends out the charge, then we'll know exactly what we need from Paul and how we need to... I gotta read the email that she will pass along.
I don't know. So I was just curious, you know, what the expectation was. And then one other thing, related to the $200,000 from the special education fund, is there money left over from the school year that ended June 2016? That go, like, what, I think, fund balance that can be applied toward next... Say it again, please? There is money left over, but it can't be applied?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a separate fund that was recently approved by the legislature that's been talked about at some of these other meetings before where you could set aside up to X percent as just an emergency type fund that could be used in this situation or a future situation? There it is. Okay. So it's just a decision of the board whether to take the full $200,000 out of that designated special education fund versus some out of that fund and some out of the, what I'll call newly, relatively newly designed emergency fund? Was there any discussion tonight about using any of that other fund?
Well, I think the thing to understand is the fund that we're taking it from has to be for special education children. So that is a very restricted fund. So if you have a special education expense, I think it would be logical to take it out of the restricted fund before a general fund because we may next time incur an unanticipated expense that isn't related to special education. And so you can't then say, oh, whoops, we should have taken it out of that fund.
If you, if you want, you can stop and you can talk to Russ about this because he knows exactly what has to happen.
I guess as a taxpayer, it's concerning. Because I thought I heard a side comment about the possibility of asking the voters for $100,000 in March to replenish the special education fund. And if there is this other fund available, that would, that would make it less necessary.
I'm going to take a wild guess, and I'm just going to answer this question because we really, the policy we still haven't put in place as far as how we're going to talk at the end. I would assume it's probably the catastrophic one that you're thinking of. And that's just a gut, that's just a hunch because the state allows us to take a catastrophic amount out that...